Yeah.
You'd stick the problem.
Oh, yeah.
They've they've come in and replaced the battery and reset it.
Are they gonna, I mean, are they in the running?
They are. I mean, right now, they're betting Vegas. I don't necessarily agree with that. But they're doing for you. They're they're up three one. They don't.
This time I'd like to call you to order the regular scheduled meeting of the Rockdale City Council. I could ask everyone to please stand and observe a moment of silence. Right. Amen. Thank you. City Clerk, please sit on the roll.
Councilmember Knight.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Joyner.
Here.
D J Walker. D J Walker. Daughtry.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Devorah Swobin.
Here.
Okay, we have four in person. This time, item number four is consideration of the minutes of the regular scheduled meeting of the whole meeting, which was held November twenty fifth of twenty twenty four. Included financial update, housing policies, down payment assistance, redevelopment, nonprofit funding summary closed session for acquisition, property acquisition, economic development, and also the minutes of the regular scheduled city council meeting, which were held on February tenth of twenty twenty five. Motion to approve the minutes is written.
So.
motion by Councilman Harris, there's second by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none on the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Item number five is consideration of additions or deletions to the agenda. No one has made me aware of any additions or deletions that were any to come for us tonight. Okay, that brings us to item number six. So I get to turn the meeting over to City Manager.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item, I am proud to say that the Rocky Mountain Event Center has been nominated for not one, but two Stella Awards for Best Conference Center and Best Adventure Center. We know how amazing the Adventure Center team is at what they do, and these nominations are well deserved. What they need is our votes. Use this Q R codes on the screen and vote today. The blue Q R code is to vote for Best Adventure Center, and the orange code is to vote for Best Conference Center. We're gonna leave those up here for a few seconds.
I'll show you how you do it. Watch this.
Thank you. Next item, our spring litter sweep. Our annual spring litter sweep kicked off in early April, leading into the Great American Cleanup, which will run from Thursday, May first through Saturday, May thirty first. We encourage everyone to participate in this cleanup, including employees, residents, and business owners. In two thousand twenty four, we had one hundred and twenty-three employees from seven departments, along with one hundred and fifty-five community volunteers. They collected over sixty-five hundred pounds of litter. Keep America Beautiful will provide the trash bags, safety vests, and trash wrappers for all participants. To volunteer, please visit Keep America Beautiful page on the city's website, rockymountnc.gov, or call four six seven four nine five zero four four for more information. The next item is Parks and Recreation Summer Hiring Event. The city's Parks and Recreation Department, in conjunction with Human Resources, held a summer job fair last week. More than ninety job seekers attended this event with thirty-five applicants receiving offers on the spot. Let's give a round of applause for that event. Parks and Recreation will continue to conduct interviews until all of the positions are filled. So if you know anyone that is in need of a summer job, please have them go onto the city's website or contact the Parks and Recreation or Human Resources Department for more information. Next item is our Monk to Mill Open House Update. Our Engineering Division recently held an open house for the Monk to Mill Trail at the Adventure Center, inviting stakeholders to share their opinions on what they would like to see regarding the trail's amenities, street skate, biking, and walking trails. They were also able to view the trail on an enlarged map and make suggestions using sticky notes. This was only the beginning of the process. If you were not able to attend this meeting, please go online to rockymountnc.gov and click the Monk to Mill Trail Story in the news section to learn more. We look forward to hearing from you. And last not least, I was at, I didn't have opportunity to speak when I was sworn as as City Manager. So I wanted to take this opportunity to think, to thank all of you for supporting me throughout the last few years. Those of you who have supported me for longer than that and continue to support me, my family, my friends, my colleagues, my peers across the state and beyond. Those of you that know me know that I'm all about teamwork. If you notice, I asked my team to be here up front today, and that's where you'll see them from here on moving out. In order for the city to reach its full potential, it will require an all-hands-on-deck approach. And this gesture is symbolic of that. I want us to be all hands on deck. I'm excited about what's in store for our city, and I look forward to working with each of you as we aim to reach new heights and accomplishments for the city of Rockdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. If you have any questions or comments, please report. That brings us to number seven, which are petitions to be received from the public. This is an opportunity to share a public comment. We thank you for coming to the city council meeting tonight and sharing views. We value all citizen input. Speaker comments are limited to a minimum of maximum, I'm sorry, maximum of three minutes during the public comment period. And at the conclusion of those three minutes, each speaker shall leave the podium. Comments must be directed to the full board, not to an individual board member or staff member. Although the board is interested in your comments, speakers should not expect any comments, action, or deliberation from the board on any issue raised during the public comment period. And in the board's discretion, it may refer issues to the appropriate city officials or staff for further investigation. If an organized group is present to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present to the group's comments. Rules shall be limited again to a maximum of three minutes. This time, I'd like to invite Mr. Butch Dancy to the podium.
Good evening.
Good.
As always, I have been attending these meetings longer than anyone sitting before me. And it gets better and better. Um, I've seen this board come from a long way. Start coming back into Agus. I want to thank all of you for your work. I want especially to thank Mr. Peter Vaughn for all he has done over the years, seeing him come and go. Have done a great job, and he had some work to do. I want to thank the communication person for the sound system, and I don't have to get messages every meeting that they can't hear you all. I want to congratulate all staff persons who have received promotions and are being rehired. I want to congratulate Elton Daniels as his new role as the City Manager. He should have been placed in that role long before now. But I always say that things happen in the right time. So thank you for accepting that role and listening to your comments and I see what you're doing. I appreciate that. I don't know, I don't live in Rocky Mountain. I've been working over here for thirty-eight years. Have family here, enemies here. It doesn't matter. I represent everybody because you cannot, you know, this person gets something when it's what you're doing for the community. So I want to thank you all, and I will continue to come to still work in Rocky Mountain and plan on working here for a long time. And anything I can do as a community person, I'll be willing to do. Sir, don't they pre-relation permission until head come off? And then I still attend the meetings and recall them because they are not recorded. So people get to see it. I do what I do out of pocket because I like communication. I like for people to be aware of what's going on. So I will continue to record those meetings, this meeting and any other meetings to make sure people are educated on issues. So thank you for allowing me to speak this time and give it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Dancy. That brings us to number eight on our agenda, which is the consideration. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda inclusive of the following: approve tax releases and/or refunds, adopt the ordinance approving temporary street closures, approve supplemental agreement with N C D O T, authorize staff to supplement application on behalf of the city, and authorize the mayor, city clerk, city attorney, and Parks and Recreation Director to execute any required documentation and/or certifications and substantial grant agreement on behalf of the city, and award the bid as recommended and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute the contract. Is there a motion to accept the approved, to approve the consent agenda? It's written.
Certainly.
All right. I think that was a motion made by Councilman Joyner and a second by Councilman Harris. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none on the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Consider agenda is now approved. This is item number nine, the presentation of proposed substantial amendments to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty four annual action plans. As I welcome Mr. Mayor McGee to the podium.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, councilmembers, City Manager, and others. I stand before you today to present the proposed substantial amendment. The purpose of this public meeting is to describe the planned amendments to reallocate C D B G and home funds to activities that meet the goals and objectives of the consolidated plan. I'm here also to request feedback from the public on plan activities and amendments. Rocky Mountain is proposing to amend the annual action plans for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four program years to reallocate funds and allow for timely expenditure of C D B G funds. The proposed amendments will reduce the budget of housing rehabilitation process by three hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars and transfer eighty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars of the funds to economic development and two hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars to down payment assistance projects to facilitate homeownership for low and moderate income households. The proposed home amendments, as you can see there, Rocky Mountain is proposing to amend the annual action plans for years twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four to reallocate funds to projects that meet the housing affordability goals. The proposed amendments would transfer eligible home cho-to, Community Housing Development Organization, set aside funds in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars as a project that would develop nine single-family homes for resale to income-eligible households. In addition, it would reduce the budget of housing rehabilitation projects by three hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars and transfer two hundred and five thousand of those funds to develop single-family homes for resale to income-eligible households. One hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars to down payment assistance projects to facilitate homeownership for low to moderate income households. At this time, we'll not for the public comment period.
Okay, we actually have two public hearings tonight. We've covered the data. Mr. McGee has covered the data. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor on the public hearing for proposed substantial amendments to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-four annual action plans. These amendments are necessary to transfer fund between planned projects that adjust for actual expenditures for completed projects and fully funded projects underway and ensure timely expenditures. At this time, I'll invite anybody who's here from the public who wishes to speak on this matter. Please come forward. Is there any member of the public who wishes to come forward tonight and speak on the proposed substantial amendments for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-four annual action plan? Okay, seeing none, I'll close this public hearing. And item ten, which is the presentation of the twenty twenty-five annual action plan for the Home Consortium, and as well as the C D B G title allocation has been made. Were there any questions from council on any of those matters? Yes, or Councilman Harris?
Mr. McGee, just one general question. When we receive, let's just say for the year fiscal year twenty-three, C D B G funds, is there a time stipulation that those funds from that year stipulations be spent? Because obviously, we go back to twenty-one, some of these. I'm just curious about what kind of time restraints are given when we receive such grants?
So you have six years for the time period. Each year, we have to meet a timeliness test by C D, by HUD. So it's called a C D B G timeliness test, and we are meeting those timeliness tests.
Thank you for your information. That that answers my question.
Any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, this time I will open up the floor to any member of the public who wishes to speak on the twenty twenty-five annual action plan for the Down East Home Consortium, which is required for home partnership investment funds and C D B G entitlement allocation. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this particular matter tonight? Just to make it clear, is there any member here from the public who wishes to speak on the twenty twenty-five annual action plan for the Down East Home Consortium? All right, seeing none, I'll close this public hearing. That brings us to item number eleven on our agenda. Item number eleven is consideration of the budget ordinance in relative to a downtown major investment synergy grant to two twenty-four Road Street, the former Memorial Hospital for five hundred thousand dollars. The grant was approved on April fourteenth, twenty twenty five, following the public hearing. At this time, I'll receive a motion. But before I do, I would like to point out that recusals have been made on behalf from Councilman Blackwell, as well as Councilman Knight on this particular matter. Once again, recusals are on file for this particular matter, for that matter, for Councilman Blackwell and Knight. With that said, is there a motion to adopt the budget ordinance amendment?
I'm moved.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
There.
Second by Councilman Daughtry. Is that Doctor Turk Walker?
Walker.
All right, Councilman Walker, my apologies. Uh, is there a need for any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, major, uh, downtown investment incentive has been passed. Item number twelve is consideration of a resolution authorizing submission of application of the Northland Department of Commerce building reuse program funding for the renovation of Memorial Hospital. A funding agreement in the amount of three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars based on the creation of thirty new healthcare jobs. Uh, once again, both Councilmen Blackwell and Knight have accused themselves of this particular vote. Is there a motion to, um, adopt number twelve?
They'll move, second.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Daughtry. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. That brings us to item thirteen on the agenda, uh, consideration of scheduling of additional committee of the hall meetings for the presentation and review of the twenty twenty-six proposed budget annual budget. Uh, those dates are Wednesday, May twenty-eighth at five P M, Monday, June second at five P M, and Wednesday, June fourth at five P M. Uh, is there a motion to approve the additional committee of the hall meetings?
Certainly.
Motion made by Councilman Harris and seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Is there any one member of coun- uh, council who would like to, um, any party comments? I mean, I feel like we ought to fill this in. I mean, I've never had a twenty-one minute meeting since I started my tenure. All right, having gone through this to a pure foot, the council tonight, I now adjourn the meeting.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.